Mr. Robscott.
Here.
Mr. Prudini. Mr. Salkiri. Mr. Antopoulos.
Here.
Mr. Ferradino.
Here.
Mr. Bruno is absent. Mr. Vandola.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Ms. Keating.
Here. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the following means. Annual notice was sent to the record, the South Bergenite, the Observer, township clerk, and posted in the lobby of the town hall and board office, setting forthcoming scheduled work meetings and public meetings of the board. And right now, we are going to swear in Mr. Stephen Vandola.
Mr. Vandola. I, Stephen Vandola, solemnly swear.
Sigh.
Or firm.
Or firm.
That I support.
That I support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
The United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I love.
That I love.
Bear true faith.
Bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established.
Established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And the state.
And the state.
On authority of the people.
On authority of the people.
So help me God. Second grace, I, Stephen Vandola.
I, Stephen Vandola.
Sigh.
Sigh.
Or firm.
Or firm.
That I possess.
That I possess.
Qualifications.
Qualifications.
Described by law.
Described by law.
The office.
The office.
A member of the Board of Education.
A member of the Board of Education.
And that I cannot.
Cannot.
Disqualified.
Disqualified.
As a holder.
As a holder.
For someone to.
For someone to.
Nineteen seventy-four dash one.
Nineteen seventy-four dash one.
Going disqualified.
Going disqualified.
To the eviction.
To the eviction.
Of crime.
Of crime.
Of the offense.
Of the offense.
Listed in.
Understood.
NJS.
NJS.
Eighteen eight.
Eighteen eight.
One dot one.
One dot one.
And then faithfully.
And then faithfully.
Partially.
Partially.
And justly performed.
And justly performed.
All these.
All these.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Going to the best.
Going to the best.
My ability.
My ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Good evening, everybody. Just wanted to recognize two of our students from Roosevelt School. So I'm just gonna read a little bit, Mr. Wang helped me with. Over the weekend of February 2nd and February 3rd, five of our students from Roosevelt School auditioned for the North Jersey Region 1 Mix and Treble Choirs. For this audition, schools from all counties of North Jersey sent students to compete for a spot in one of these ensembles. Subschools sent over thirty students. Both five students auditioned as altars, the highest populated voice part, with over a hundred and forty students auditioning, and only about eight being accepted. Auditioning and being chosen for one of these ensembles is the equivalent of making an all-star sporting team. I'm thrilled to announce that two of the students who auditioned, Kelly Rivera and Cecilia Valdez, were accepted into the North Jersey Region 1 Treble Choir. This is Cecilia's second year on the stage. So if I can just ask the one or the other time to come up. Cecilia Valdez. Cecilia here. And Kelly Rivera. Thank you. Just another example of how great our students do things beyond the classroom. So it's very nice to see them here. And as I read, Mr. Wang, he said, "Help me." It's a very prestigious honor to get accepted into something like that. So we're very proud of you. Community, school, or board members, I know I can speak for them as well. At this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Bruno, our high school principal, who's also gonna be recognizing some students from the high school and also give us an update on something that's happening in the high school. Thank you again.
Hi, good evening. First, gonna have the mock trial crew come on up. Okay, so these students, what the mock trial is? This is an after-school club. And we have some really great clubs. And this is just an example of all the great things that are happening with our clubs and co-curricular activities. The mock trial is an academic competition where the students simulate the roles of attorneys and witnesses in a fictional trial situation. It provides students with hands-on opportunities to develop their understanding of the law, court procedure, and the legal system. There were some students who took on the role of attorney, and they examined and cross-examined witnesses, made and responded to objections to alleged violations of rules of evidence and procedure, and presented effective opening statements and closing arguments. Some students took on the role of a witness, and they learned the facts in a witness statement thoroughly so that he or she could relate to them in response to questions without notes, as if they were part of their own experience. These students had to create with limited means a credible and engaging character that could hold a judge's attention. So this is a pretty high-profile situation that we're putting these students into. They're in a courtroom. They worked with our volunteer attorneys. I'd like to also thank Ken Poro and James Shovlin. And this year, the mock trial team was ranked third after the preliminary rounds for Bergen County out of twenty-six competing teams, and placed in the quarterfinals, which is the farthest our mock trial team has ever come. So it's a huge accomplishment for our club, and we just wanted to recognize and let them know that we're really proud of you and keep up the great work. Yeah, thank you very much. Also, we need to bring in Kevin Garcia, Natalie Cialaglu, Eric Mangro, Jacala Garcia, Emma Ferswaller, Hades Bahu, Russia Aguilar, Nina Turpin, Julian Reno, Sal Khodachi, Rachel Almeny, Kaisa Chowery, and Yaren Haseg. Congratulations, guys, thanks. Also, we were going to recognize tonight another huge accomplishment for one of our athletes. But unfortunate, well, not unfortunate. Fortunately, right now, he's playing hockey, and they just won three to nothing tonight. And they are going to be advancing on Wednesday to the semifinals, I think. And that Sean Lanner just got his one-hundredth, and I don't know if he scored one tonight, but he had his hundredth goal in ice hockey, which is a huge accomplishment. He joins the ranks of some really prestigious athletes in Bergen County. So we're real proud of him. But we'll make sure he gets his certificate tomorrow. Also, so whilst I have the microphone, I just wanted to give a little update on some of the things that are happening at the high school. A lot of these things happen behind the scenes, and they don't ever make it to the Facebook or the Twitter or the Instagram pages. But they're really important things that are happening in the high school. First of all, one of the things that we're facing this year is state testing. We're moving from PARC to NJSLA, and it stands for New Jersey Student Learning Assessment for math, English, and science. So what we're doing is we're taking, we're really taking a look at our test scores and what we can do to improve our standardized test score. So some of the things that we're doing this year, we've been doing grade level assemblies. Your children might have told you. We're calling each grade down, talking to them in small groups about the importance of state testing, what it means as far as placement goes, what it means as far as high school ranking. Also, we use the test in the gym, which is a really big environment by grade, and it's loud and noisy. You can imagine what it's like to take a computerized test in a gymnasium with a room full of your peers. So what we're doing this year is we're testing in homerooms. So it's gonna take a lot more work, but we think that the value of testing in small group is gonna be real beneficial. Also, not only are we educating students, but we're educating the parents as well. So you might have seen up here, there's a flyer for a parent testing night. We want to educate the parents as much as we can about mandatory and standardized testing, which not only includes the new NJSLA, but also we wanna give you information about SAT, PSAT, ACT, what all of that means, when they should be taking it, and what's the value and importance of each test, what each test represents, and the content of each. So we really hope that you guys will come out and join us on the parent night because March thirteenth is on the fire. Also, too, just to mention, and I'm even bored of pictorial of what I'm talking about right now. They have pictures of them. But we just finished our school musical, which was The Wizard of Oz. It included a number of students and faculty as well. It was an amazing performance. Anyone who went, it was unbelievable, the talent that we have, the singing, dancing, acting. It was wonderful. Another thing that kind of flies under the radar screen that I wanna mention is something called the Youth Task Force. And Ms. Ringen heads it up and was wondering if we'd like to talk a little bit about it? Or do you like, no? Okay. It's a bunch of, what we did last year, we started, we put together a group of our sophomores from the ninth and tenth grade on our society, really. And what they do is they participate in a series of workshops through the county. They learn about environmental scanning, the importance of data collection, engaging in conversations about what's happening in their community. It takes particular focus on alcohol, tobacco use. And one of the projects, I put in the pictures for the board, was the students went around their school and their community and took photographs of litter, I guess, you know, of the effects of what alcohol, juuling, and tobacco does. In the publication from the county, I think we had probably, you know, four double-page spreads. The photographs that the students took were pretty impressive. And what it does is represents the environment that they live in, and it was called "Not in My Backyard." So that was something that our students see as far as litter goes with regard to alcohol, drug, alcohol, tobacco, and juuling use. So that was very impressive. And then something that flies under the radar screen. It's a really great group of kids. They don't necessarily get the recognition for it, but it's a really nice program that we do here. Another thing I wanna mention is we opened, finally, our school store. So that's really exciting. We had a grand opening. There are board members there. It's called The Cave. And we have it open throughout the day, also after school, for students who might wanna stop in, get a snack before practice or their clubs or activities. So that's a really big accomplishment, and that's a great example of how a class, because that was spearheaded by a marketing class, translates what's happening, what they were learning in the classroom to real life. Because what they did was now they're actually, they had to resource, and they run, and they sell the school's items out of the school store. So that's kudos to Mrs. Weckstein and the marketing class. One of the other things we were just recognized for, Lynn Hurst High School was a winner of the most improved seatbelt usage by Hackensack, Meridian, Hackensack University Medical Center. That's kudos to Mr. Tuero and Jager Zed classes. What we do is we, first, they're out there in the morning, here before everybody gets here, and they're taking account of those students that are wearing seatbelts in the front and backseat. And then after, spring's also a part of this, then also, after a period of time about seatbelt education, then they will count seatbelt usage again. And we were among the, one of the high schools that scored the highest percentage-wise. So hopefully, some of the messages in school that we are sharing where the students are actually getting through to them. Another great accomplishment was that Lynn Hurst High School won the award. We were given the NJSI Sportsman of the Year Award, which the banner just got hung up in our gym. And it's an award that's voted on by coaches and athletic directors in our league. And one of the, one of the criteria is that no, there's no sports objections or no problems with our athletes throughout the winter sports season. So that was a really great accomplishment. Kudos to our athletics. Our winter athletics, we just finished up swimming, bowling. The bowling team won the NJIC Metalands Division Champions under our first-year coach, Mark Affito, who was also named Coach of the Year. And was working here. Ice hockey is having an amazing season.
Tonight.
Right? They did win tonight, three to nothing. And they're going to be advancing to Wednesday. Girls' basketball, they finished the...
Oh, they didn't finish yet.
They won.
They won.
Yeah. So they won the first round of the state tournament tonight. Boys' basketball. Boys' basketball finished third in the division and are playing tonight at Ever Park. So that's at seven. So they're on right now. Indoor track, which is a really, which is our second year for indoor track, and we have a huge team. They're doing wonderful. They had great seasons. A number of number, too many to mention, athletes broke school records or their own personal records. And worth mentioning was Arianna Labardi competed in the state meet and champions in the shot club. Sharon Dance have been in a number. Sharon Dance have been in a number of competitions, and they performed in state competition on February sixteenth and seventeenth. Wrestling, our wrestling team finished second in our division and qualified for the state tournament. Dylan Weaver, he won the Region Three tournament at one-thirty-eight, and he, which is a huge accomplishment. He's going down to collect, to wrestle in Atlantic City. He's leaving, no, I'm sorry, on Thursday, he wrestles. He's the first Lynn Hurst wrestler to qualify for the state finals since 2002. So that's a huge accomplishment for our wrestling team. Also, too, some of the things that, we love the accomplishments of our students, but quite often, we don't recognize enough our teachers. So couple, you know, we do our professional development. That's our mandatory hours that we have to put in. But there's teachers that go above and beyond. And worth mentioning is there was a group that attended, voluntarily attended, mental health first day, called Adults Assisting Young People. It was an all-day Saturday workshop. These teachers gave up their Saturday from eight o'clock to three or four PM to attend this workshop, which was wonderful. And what it does is it taught skills about pooping, particularly with students' mental health issues, which we know in education, you know, we deal with every day. Also, there was another voluntary workshop that our students attended. It was for Narcan training, which was by the Rutgers University Division of Addiction and Psychiatry. So that was also another voluntary workshop that our students, that our teachers attended, and it's definitely worth mentioning. The next thing, piggybacking off of that, is our Stigma Free campaign. And it's a campaign that brings awareness to the mental health issues, not only of the adults in the community, but most particularly for us, our students. We've collaborated with the municipal alliance, and we have created a framework that includes a website, which will start advertising. We purchased signs for the high school and pins, which the board has. One of the nice things is there is a project that we're working with our language arts department called Project Flawed. It's a writing assignment that students will talk about the flaws that they are proud of. So that's a really nice cross-curricular program that we're integrating into the eleventh grade this year. Next year, when they're seniors, it's something that we hope that the underclassmen will look up to when they see seniors then talking about some of their flaws and how they're proud of them. So that's a really nice project that we're doing. And that hits into Wellness Week, which is in May. We are doing a school-wide wellness walk on the fifteenth in collaboration with Lynn Hurst Police Department, and also having our second annual Wellness Fair. Also, Ms. Ringen is a big part of that. And these projects, while these programs are in conjunction with the Lynn Hurst Municipal Alliance, which funds a lot of the programs that we do in the high school, we're really fortunate to have that relationship with them. We are very fortunate to also have members of our high school, the municipal alliance, along with Mr. Greco. So those are just some of our, some of our things that are happening in the high school that you don't necessarily get to see all the time, but that are definitely worth hearing about. Thanks.
Thank you, Lauren. I make a motion for approval of the minutes from January twenty-eighth, 2019. Do I have a second? Will I call?
Mr. Robscott. Mr. Prudini. Mr. Salkiri.
Four.
Mr. Antopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Ferradino.
Four.
Mr. Vandola.
I would say I was in here.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Keating.
Four.
Good evening, and I don't have a formal report tonight, but I did want to mention some things we talked about in our public works session earlier. We could talk about our new school that will be opening, targeted for September 2020, and a lot of the planning that's gonna go into that in terms of staff and curriculum and programs. So we're definitely looking forward to that and working with our administrative, teaching, and support staff and setting all of that up, the planning that goes into that. So we're very excited for that. As we can see from the presentation by Ms. Bruno, our students and our staff are doing an excellent job, not only in the high school, but in all buildings. Obviously, there's a lot of students that were recognized. It's amazing what they're doing. And again, one of the points that she made that I thought was important was that, you know, our staff are really doing some good stuff, too. They're going above and beyond. Unfortunately, I missed some of the events the week before school's closed. I had battled the flu. But there were some really cool things that happened that week. The school store, as you mentioned. There was a training for Narcan that a lot of our teachers attended, you know, on their own. They weren't, you know, the way twisted their arm to go. They're just really, you know, they have their heart in it. It's really exciting to see. One of the things I did want to mention is we do have some committee meetings coming up with the board. And one of the things that did come out very recently that I'm gonna share with our administrative staff this week, and eventually, our entire staff, that's gonna be released in a public at some point. Right now, they're considered a bar, but it is the New Jersey School Performance Report. So they just came out. We're just trying to get passbooks for all of our administrative staff to be able to go on there. And basically, that's an opportunity for, when they do come out, for the community to basically see how our school is doing in terms of a lot of different areas, whether it be our enrollment trends, our academic achievement, whether it be PARC, obviously, is changing, but last year it was PARC, so it will be those PARC scores. Student growth in general, just comparing from one year to the next, just to see, you know, comparing it yourselves. College and career readiness, which at the elementary levels, can it ease more of your attendance? And in the high schools, you know, how we do on PSAT, SAT, ACT, and we're having a night on March thirteenth. That's gonna be very informative. So that's a good night, really, to get out there and ask the questions that, you know, and a nice environment and what a lot of staff members have a lot of knowledge of those things. It's a good thing to attend. Performance report also has information on advanced coursework. We offer a lot of AP classes here, honors classes. There's a lot of information on that. Visual and performing arts, our graduation rates. The performance report not only gets into graduation rates, but it also gets into post-secondary information on students' habit doing, you know, down the line, a year or two later. You know, if they're still attending two-year school, four-year school, what they're doing at that point. Performance reports also have information on climate and environment, obviously. Chronic absenteeism is something that's in the newspaper all the time. It's something that we always wanna focus on when our students are in school. It also has information on disciplinary data incidents, things like that. And just basically, it's an overall accountability report for the community to see and make sure we're all doing our jobs the right way and doing the best for our students. So again, that's something to look forward to in the future. It's probably something we're gonna break down a little bit, a little bit more in detail for the public. And it's something we're gonna go over in one of our communities, actually, tomorrow. So again, continuing to come to these meetings. We're gonna give out as much information as we can and positive things going on. As you can see, we have a lot of students individually and has teams and groups doing a great job with mock trial. You know, we had our eighth graders here that are, that did a great job. So again, it just makes us proud. And again, let's go, let's go. Girls' basketball, boys' basketball is playing right now, and we have wrestler, ice hockey, so we're doing a great job in winter. So let's keep up the good work. Thank you.
Good evening. My report tonight has been basically a little bit of two parts. One is the financial end. The review of the seventeen eighteen school audit, which was presented here, was formally sent to Department of Educational and Training. It was there, and then a request was prepared and forwarded to the Treasury Department, specifically asking for the monies and funds so we can write out the deficit. We will be alone. The exact amount, it has not been determined yet, mainly because the governor gives his budget cashage on March fifth. And until that comes out, none of the requests for additional funds will be finalized until after that is determined. The, I feel I'm confident that the substantial amount of money, I just don't know at this point. If we get everything that we requested, or we need to. I don't know what the total financial status is of the state. If they have the money, the majority is gonna be there. I don't understand. The other thing that we're dealing with, with the superintendent, was discussions, discussions relating to the middle school, which is due for occupancy. which is due for occupancy in September 20. People may think that when the building's finished, that the town, which has done great for the school, might build it. I can't say that at all, but they just can't just give us the key for us to walk in the door. We, the board administration, have to do some planning to make sure that the transition and the opening of the school runs as smoothly as possible. There are some financial issues that are outstanding that we have to look at. We also have to look at the curriculum. If you're going to be starting a middle school where the students are split between a number of the elementary schools, not only to one building, whether you have additional logistical problems that would have to be worked out. And once again, we spent a lot of time today, and previously, especially today, addressing some of these issues. Like, one of the issues is just, with the help of the high school principal, because I was talking to her, is I wanted to measure the students coming from the elementary schools into the high school for early development, or perhaps, we. But that's just one aspect of a looking. And she mentioned to me, which I think you will think of, is that she got the data, she's recently, or maybe she's already started preparing her schedule for next year. How can we do that? We don't even have a pencil. So, and how are we going to know what teachers are going to be in the building? How many kids are going to be in each class? So we have a lot of work to do, and we're going to need the input and the source and the, of it, that we, from everybody. For instance, the elementary, the school principals, we need people. We need the input from the teachers, or we need to know what the teacher's opinion is and what some issues that we need to face. Because we want to be as prepared as possible when it comes to kind of the tournament. But these are the things we're doing. One of the things we're going to do is review all of the curriculum and make sure that the curriculum, which has been spread over a couple of different buildings now, that curriculum is the same for every, with every level. And that each teacher knows what that curriculum is, so that everybody's more aware of it. So we got, we got a lot of work to do, and we'll be home. Please help me. Thank you very much.
We're going to have a public comment on tonight's agenda, and the first person listed is Mr. Darius Hughes.
Ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the Lynn Hurst Education Association, we'd like to welcome Mr. Vindola and graduate Ms. Keith and Mr. Donovan on their ascension to president, vice president. It's a great, a big job for you. A question for you, and I guess you're building more for the, Mr. Egan, where do we stand as far as the referendum goes going forward? Is that, is that something to answer moving forward of the college, not the school, and how we're reaching the school? That's why the referendum goes, is that the referendum?
It confirmed the referendum that the public passed.
Yes, the $19 million?
Right. There were, there were issues with it. The architects wanted to try and reconfigure it to make it blend in and support the middle school. That's ongoing.
So that's ongoing?
That's ongoing.
I just want, I just want to let you guys know that we've been working real hard on developing curriculum by, by, by staff, so we're going to do it, you know, actually. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Under, under financial facilities and district planning, any board member who takes any, any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of finance facilities, the district planning committee may so indicate now and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained.
The motion that we tabled number 12, certain aspects.
I second it.
The motion is tabled starting from apps, sorry, number 12. Okay, we're going to do from one through 11, and then we will do number 12 separately. I make a motion for one through 11.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Rappisgato.
Four.
Mr. Presuti. Mr. Salkiri. Mr. Annapolis, four. Mr. Ferrandino. Mr. Vindola. Mr. Donovan. Ms. Keith.
Item number 12 being resolved at the Lynn Hurst Ward identification, approved the attached professional development opportunities. The board is going to be tabling at this time the SXSWEDU conference, the two lead conference, safety and security conferences, and the two leadership panel summits. The rest are applicable.
Roll call.
Mr. Rappisgato. Mr. Presuti. Mr. Salkiri. Mr. Annapolis. Four. Mr. Ferrandino. Mr. Vindola. Mr. Donovan. Ms. Keith.
Education and Curriculum Committee. Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Education and Curriculum Committee may so indicate now, and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion that number one be accepted as read.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Rappisgato. Mr. Presuti. Mr. Salkiri. Mr. Annapolis. Mr. Ferrandino. Mr. Vindola. Mr. Donovan. Ms. Keith.
Here's one other thing I'd like to get to the Education and Curriculum Committee. We have, our newest members, Mr. Vindola, will now be a part of this committee, and welcome aboard this evening. Always a pleasure to work with you.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of policies, rules, and regulations committee may so indicate now, and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion that the following policies be approved, numbers one through four, and adopt them as assessed.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Rappisgato. Mr. Presuti. Mr. Salkiri. Mr. Annapolis. Mr. Ferrandino. Mr. Vindola. Mr. Donovan. Ms. Keith.
Four.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of business may so indicate now, and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion to approve items one and two.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Rappisgato, four. Mr. Presuti. Mr. Salkiri. Mr. Annapolis. Mr. Ferrandino. Mr. Vindola. Mr. Donovan. Ms. Keith.
Four. Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of personnel may so indicate now, and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion that one to 15 would be accepted as read. Roll call.
Mr. Rappisgato. Mr. Presuti. Mr. Salkiri. Mr. Annapolis. Mr. Ferrandino. Mr. Vindola. Mr. Donovan. Four. Ms. Keith.
Four. And a public hearing on non-agenda items. Darius, do you want to come back up? Because we had called him before, but now are you good? Trucee, four.
I just wanted to start us off before I ask my other questions that I have. Sorry about that. Are you saying that we're not, it's not 100% guaranteed we're going to get the loans of full amount of what our deficits is?
That's not guaranteed.
That is not guaranteed. And do we know where we are tapping in to get the other money from? It does not get the full short?
None of this time.
Okay. And so I had the pleasure of going over, reading the 181-page comprehensive audit report with all the findings. I did have some questions. Several places in the longer audit, the findings state contracts and services were entered, but never passed by board. Whose responsibility was it to get these documents in front of the board? Okay, who signed contracts?
I can't think of this. I'm having a full report in front of me to refresh my memory, but I do know, yes, there were contracts that did not come from the board. However, there was contracts that were processed through co-op or state contracts. And if there was an issue with that, what not of the board needed to approve. And then obviously, the board would say, yes, they should. And just continuing with the review. Everything would definitely, everything would start properly, with the exception of getting the board approval.
Okay, and who has the authority within the administration to sign said contracts with all of the vendors? Because then, who's signing the contracts, and then they have to present it to the board? But who, who is, is this a department, is this an individual? This is a few individuals.
I'm not sure, but I'll give an answer to you if I can, if I can expand.
Also, another question about, because I couldn't help but notice the glaring, whose responsibility was it to update the calculation for health benefit contributions to reflect the current premium rate? Because that number was like $1.1 million. Did I read that wrong? Like, that is the number that, that is now added into our deficit? $1.1 million of health benefits were not calculated properly?
No, I believe it was that the, because we switched vendors. There's what they call an outstanding, outstanding claims that was still pending that we have to manage.
And was that known to us?
Say again?
Was that known to us until this audit, until?
We didn't, we determined it. We found out about it when the old provider sent us a bill.
And that, and is there not a threshold with, for them not to be, like, how long can they go without submitting a bill to us? Like, they waited years, right? Like, two years?
No, no, I think this, that, that bill was generated because they notified that they were not going to be up carrying.
Oh, and so they got all upset and, but just another part?
No, no, it's not that they got upset, it's that these, this amount of money is there.
But how long had that bill accumulated before they were like, oh, okay, you don't want, you don't want us on your team anymore, you owe us this, by the way? Like, how long were they going to let that go?
No, no, it was like, I think, was it a year or two, two years?
There's not a threshold on that?
What's that?
There's not a threshold on that?
No.
In terms of statute of limitations, do you? It's a book account contract claim, so that's a six-year statute of limitations. But that would, that'd be assumed that they carry premiums to the board. All right, I want to get down to it.
Thank you. I make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second. Roll call.
Mr. Rappisgato. Mr. Presuti. Mr. Salkiri. Mr. Annapolis. Mr. Ferrandino. Mr. Vindola. Mr. Donovan. Ms. Keith.